Allow.
This meeting, on the last item?
Related to COVID, so, because I think the board would have to vote to reverse it since they voted to do it.
Well, if you could read it.
All right, Ms. Chairman, you are on.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is June 1st, 2020, and this is the regular agenda meeting for the Board of Supervisors. So we'll start out this morning with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd please stand. As the events of the day continue to unfold, we seek your clarity and your peace. We know you are with us as we gather here together today. Come fully into our situation, both as a group and individually, and sort out the muddled feelings and distorted thoughts that plague us. Cover us with a blanket of honesty and patience that is not of this world. Struggling for solutions amid differing personalities can seem impossible. Thankfully, we are not expected to be perfect. Thankfully, we are told in the Bible that we all fail short. So as we sit here today, let us release the bird of blame in exchange for accord. Help us to endure disagreement and strife with godly courage and love. Grant us peace and knowing that you are pursuing your purpose in our lives. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undying, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Board of Supervisors may by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice on the board's, from the board's attorney on any item contained within this agenda pursuant to A R S 38431.03. At this point, I'll entertain a motion and action to call for an executive session to be held July the 6th, 2020 at 9:00 a.m. This will be for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with A R S 38431.03 to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk.
So moved.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I'll entertain a motion as well, an action to approve waiving the reading in full of items presented for discussion, adoption, or approval at this meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Going on to the official business to come before the board this morning. First, we have discussion or pending contemplated litigation claims and demands. County Attorney Estman, do we have anything? Okay, we have nothing. Next item would be committee and/or legislative reports. We'll start out with Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have nothing official to report, but I have received quite a few compliments on the way our senior senators handling the Meals on Wheels. They've even gone out and given toilet paper to people out there, and I've gotten a lot of compliments on that. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Gold?
None today, Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Angus?
I have absolutely nothing official either, but we will be having a final wrap-up meeting for C S A on Friday, and so I will have a report at next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have a statement. Five times in my public service, I placed my hand on the Bible to defend and protect the Constitution and laws of the United States of America, Arizona, Mojave County, and District One. The Constitution guarantees the right of peaceful assembly. What happened to Mr. Floyd is unconscionable. Those officers involved need to be met with the swift hand of justice. But I have a message for anyone attempting to harm our citizens of Mojave County. Rioting and looting will not be tolerated. This bulldog will not stand and turn another cheek. I'll let my redneck show a little bit right now, and I have a little bit of a warning for those attempting to come to Mojave County with those purposes in mind. Don't corner something that's meaner than you are. This is Mojave County, and our citizens matter. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Watson. And as far as my activities, I've attended C S A Executive Committee teleconferences, and I've also attended fire board meetings with Oatman Fire Department and Lake Mojave Rancho's Fire Department. County Manager, do you have a report for us this morning?
Madam Chairman, I have no report today. Thanks.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the March 16th, April 6th, May 4th, 2020 regular Board of Supervisors meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We'll go on now to the call to the public. The in-person call to the public portion of this meeting has been suspended. Comments can and have been submitted to the clerk of the board and delivered, and I believe the clerk of the board has several call to the public statements that she will read to you at this point.
Madam Chair, I have three to read that were submitted via the online submittal system. The first one is from Jason Trahan. His address is 4397 Arizona Court, Fort Mojave, Arizona, and he wrote, unsafe property at 4410 South Rio Verde Drive. This property is large, safety issue, fire hazard. The county has been notified by multiple people in the area over the last three years. This is now the second fire at this property in six months. I and five others could have lost their homes due to David Arnett's negligence and the county to do anything about all the trash on the property. It's a dump. I have called Ron Gould and his secretary and Timothy Walsh. Giant fail needs to be handled. The second call to the public comes from Pamela Hansel from 4406 Arizona Court in Fort Mojave. She writes, property located at 4410 Rio Verde, Fort Mojave, Arizona, which caught fire on May 27th, 2020. Over a year ago, we started trying to get something done about this property due to the fire hazard it poses to all surrounding properties. I called the fire station, which is located on Camp Mojave Road, and I also stopped by there and showed them pictures of the property, and I also left a message at the fire station on Joy Lane for the captain. I am being told that the county has to deal with it. The third call to the public comes from Joy Bancroft. Her address is 4682 Linden Drive, Topoc Golden Shores, and she writes, my name is Joy Bancroft. I'm Topoc Golden Shores. Every month, I spend a lot of time working on my call to the public statement and find that I might be viewed as a nuisance to some, but it's with passion from me and a team of people in Golden Shores that keeps us letting you know our struggles. We keep up with emails to various sources in the county like Supervisor Gold, Barbara Hitzl, Sheriff Schuster, and Jenny Nelson from Code Enforcement, and we don't always like what we want to hear, but we appreciate all the attention and response to our issues in Golden Shores, and we thank you very much. Recently, in speaking with Lieutenant Sarvino and Ms. Nelson, who have been most helpful, we have learned that our efforts to continually keep on top of properties and certain bad elements in our town has been interpreted as bordering on harassment towards those affected residents. Let me assure you, it is not our intent to harass any residence or property owner. If certain elements in this town would keep up their properties as to not call attention to themselves, we wouldn't be spending our time concentrating on reporting their trashy properties they are living in or the bad element whom are trying to dump the trash. As Neighborhood Watch continues to observe potential crime activity or violations within county ordinances, sometimes our only avenue is to seek the authorities to consider any violations within the law. So please, all county sources who have our ear, do not misinterpret our mission. Thank you. And that was the last one.
Okay. We'll go on now to the Board of Supervisors' consent agenda. The following items listed under consent agenda will be considered as a group enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items unless the board member so requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda for a separate discussion and action. Supervisor Watson, do you have any items you would like removed?
One item, number 66.
Supervisor Angus, do you have any?
That was the one. No more.
Supervisor Gold?
None today, Madam Chairman.
And Supervisor Johnson?
None, Madam Chair. I don't make a motion unless you have an item to pull to approve the consent minus item 66.
Second the motion.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 66, this is authorize additional resources in public health to include hiring up to three temporary clerical employees to support COVID-19 operations in response. The positions will be funded through grant funding if available, the general fund, or a combination there. Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Chairman. I had got the wrong number on that. I apologize, but I believe Supervisor Angus had a question. Is that correct?
Oh, well, I just wanted to let public health explain the necessity of this now.
Sure. Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, these three positions would be used for data entry positions. As we test individuals or we work on testing events, we have a fair amount of data that needs to be entered into the MedSys database, in addition to follow-up data that needs to get entered into this system, which at this point nurses are doing, and we need to free up those nurses' times to be focused just on case investigations, testing itself, and other activities that are very nursing-focused and specific. So we're looking at these three positions basically to help with this administrative role that we need to play in this response that would then fill that at a very low, you know, and free up that nursing time.
I think as this thing gets more and more, and I understand, like you said, that the nurses were doing that, so I think this is a very good idea. Thank you.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
What kind of time do you expect these people to devote? Is it a full-time job or a part-time job?
You know, that's a good question, and I, we will scale up, so we're not interested in just hiring for the positions without having a full workload or full caseload, so we will be scaling up. In one scenario, we could look at hiring one person in each of the communities to assist those nursing staff with that role. We do have more cases here in the Kingman area with that particular nurse working that, those cases, so we may adjust that, but basically, we would make sure that the workload that we have would meet the number of hours that we would be requesting of that person.
But it's not an eight-hour job right now?
It certainly could be, to play catch-up on some of the data entry now that we've got increased testing, increased cases, increased contact tracing, increase follow-up on all of these cases.
So you're thinking that three people in the three different cities are going to be eight hours a day, five days a week?
Possibly. Again, we need to evaluate the number of cases that we have and the workload that we have before we do any kind of hiring and posting of a position, and assess that need, and then we will look at hiring those individuals and scaling up.
I was just curious if, because I know we made the offer before that we have some people in some departments that might, you know, use the extra money themselves, and especially if you're hiring outside where you say, well, we're hiring you five days a week till we get caught up, and then you're down to four hours, it's going to be hard to probably find somebody that, is that flexible to work?
Understood. Right.
That's all, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
One comment to that Supervisor Johnson would be, we need to make sure that that person can actually, as you said, be dedicated to this work, because we can't, what we're finding is most people are sort of transitioning back to their normal jobs, which were full-time possibly before that, and so as a result of that, we need to make sure that these people can be dedicated time and don't get sort of distracted, if you will, into their, into their regular jobs. So if they were part-time employees, and they needed extra work, and they could do administrative work, we could certainly look at that as an option.
Madam Chair? Yes. And so this isn't temporary? This is, these are full-time? So what happens when hopefully things?
So they're temporary.
They're temporary?
Yes, they are. They're only temporary positions that we were looking at.
Thank you.
So any kind of increase in an employee's hours or change in direction of their responsibilities would be at the will of their supervisor, the ability for them to transition and commit hours to this effort and be available when needed.
Okay. Any other? Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll go down to our public hearings.
Madam Chair, do you have a reconsideration from Supervisor Watson? Did you have an item that you wanted?
No, I didn't. No, I just had the, I had the wrong number. Apologize.
Okay, first item, this would be to approve the reconsideration of item 58, open public hearing discussion of possible action, Ray approved the adoption of Board of Supervisors' Resolution 2020-067, a special use permit for a cottage industry in Golden Valley. So I'll make a motion to approve the reconsideration.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, I'll now open the public hearing. This will be discussion of possible action, Ray approved the adoption of Board of Supervisors' Resolution Number 2020-067, special use permit for a cottage industry on assessor's parcel number 0637016F to allow for gravel sales in an A R 10A zone in Golden Valley vicinity. We do have the applicant here today. I have no other speakers. The situation on this was it was approved at the last board meeting, but there was miscommunications between the applicant and Development Services overlooking the fact that the applicant needed one additional vehicle approved for the cottage industry. Does anybody on the board have any questions or comments or would like to speak to the applicant? Seeing none, I'll make a motion that we approve. I'll close the public hearing, and I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second the motion.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Barbara. Going on to the regular agenda, item 71, this will be a discussion of possible action to approve the proposed comments regarding the northern Mexican garter snake and authorize the chairman to sign a letter to the United States Fish and Wildlife Service containing Mojave County's comments on the proposed rules. Any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion. Supervisor Watson?
Thank you. Madam Chairman, yes, I had spoke with the Development Services folks, Christine Ballard, Mr. Walsh. My concern was the drastic amount of new acreage that is proposed in Mojave County and the reductions of areas in other parts of the state. That, along with the concern that I had for the WikiUp area's economic vitality, that was not included in the initial findings of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Actually, they somewhat ignored the value of economic activity in the WikiUp area. So those were the areas of my concern. I'm very much in favor of sending this comment. So with that, I will make a motion for approval.
Okay. We have a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item, this will be a discussion of possible action, Ray approved the adoption of Board of Supervisors' Resolution 2020-079, supporting the proposed naceral manufacturing plant.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item, 73, discussion of possible action, Ray related to the report from Mojave County Treasurer's Office and the Mojave County Sheriff's Office regarding the updated plan for collecting delinquent personal property taxes. See Sheriff Schuster is on his way to the podium, and I'm looking for the treasurer. I'm not sure. Okay, we have Luke Moran here to represent the Treasurer's Office. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, Madam Chair. How are you?
Very well, thank you.
Distinguished members of the board, as you recall, at the last board meeting, Supervisor Johnson had some questions and rightful concerns about the method in which we were conducting delinquent tax collection. We had put together a team involving all departments associated, and I'm just going to turn the mic over to my chief civil officer, who will explain what we've come up with and what we're going to do in the future to make this an easier process. Ryan?
Good morning.
Good morning.
The, we put together an outline that was included in the background information. Does anybody have any questions on that outline?
Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What has concerned me is with the personal is it's doing payable the day it's doing payable, and we seem to be getting them out years and, you know, and months and everything else, and we need to catch up so that the day it's doing payable, and we have a lot of them out there, but once we're caught up, we're out there to either collect the money or take the property so that it doesn't become a problem. I know there's some problems with what are you going to do with this trailer or whatever, but if you have solutions for that, then I think the board's more than interested in, you know, taking care of it, because the longer it stays, the bigger trash it gets, and then you've got everybody else involved, so.
Correct, and one of the things that we did is we gathered everybody together, the assessor's office, I T., the treasurer's office, and we came up with a plan, like a total, a total plan that works from when the tax bill goes out to the time it's either abated or we collect on it. And I think, I think everybody's on board now with the same page. We have the flow. Everybody agreed, and we, we put everything in there that, that would help expedite this, this situation. And one of the things that we're doing is going after the oldest ones first. We've made that a priority, and we, if you, if you look on the background information, we've already gone after the 15 oldest, and there's, it kind of gives you an overview of the results of those. We're finding new, we're finding the owners, new addresses for some of the owners, so they got sent some new tax bills. Some of the stuff we've recommended for abatement, and others, we're just still working on. A lot of the people that we found that have sold the real property, didn't do anything with the, the personal property on the property, and then moved out of state, and, but we're locating those guys. And so hopefully, we can get the oldest ones handled, and then that'll free us up to work on the other stuff. But I think going forward, going after the largest ones first and working our way down to the smallest ones are probably more cost benefit to the county than just randomly going through stuff. So we definitely have a plan, sir.
Could, like you say, mobile home, you know, for instance, that's probably where you have a lot of your problems with, and the people have sold it or done, done whatever they've done. As personal property, do you have the authority when it's doing payable to go out there and hook it up and take it off?
We can. The, the way we have it set up is we're going to seize it in place and then try and, and then sell it if that's what we're doing with it. Our goal is to seize it when we identify the property and try and get it sold within three weeks. It doesn't always happen that quick, depending on, obviously, we have to notify the, the owners with notices or do publications in the paper. Sometimes that takes a bit of time, but the, the goal is once we get to the point where we, we've identified them, we can send them the notices and seize the property, we're going to try and do it in three weeks. That doesn't necessarily mean three weeks from the time the notices go out, three weeks from the time we've identified the property and the owners. So that's our goal. The state law gives us a year to sell it. We, we obviously don't want to see something for a year. That's, that's not even something we're considering. As soon as we can get it seized, we're going to sell it and try and sell it within three weeks.
Sounds good to me. I have no other questions. Thank you.
Madam Supervisor, members of the board, I just wanted to add one thing. The assessor's office has been very helpful, and we've actually identified some additional resources that we're going to work into the process. Their field appraisers often visit some of these properties and may have taken pictures and stuff, have other and may have taken pictures and stuff, have other documentation that could be helpful to the sheriff's office. And so they have offered to make all of that information available as an additional resource to hopefully cut down the time it takes the sheriff's office to investigate and look into each of these parcels. And that's all I have to add.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item, it's be a proven signed amendment one to contract number 19B-09, veterinary services to low-cost bay neuter clinic of Kingman, extending the contract for the first optional one-year period.
Shall I move?
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 75, approve and sign amendment number two, contract number 18-P-03, senior meals program to KRMC, extending the contract for an additional one-year period. Further approve KRMC's request for a 6.3% price increase to the total per meal cost due to unforeseen increases in food costs and decreases in food supplies resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic.
I'll make a motion for approval contingent upon researching the increase in food costs and those cost increased this year to make sure that we're keeping balance with consumer price index, the cost of foods and the cost of delivery.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item, number 76. It's be approve and sign amendment number five to contract 13-P-08, detention food services, Trinity Services Group, adding pricing for average daily population levels lower than 450 ADP with all other contract provisions remaining the same. Do I have a motion or a discussion?
Shall I move?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 77, approve and sign amendment number three to contract 15-P-02, detention healthcare services, WellPath LLC, extending for an additional two-year period. Further approve staffing adjustments negotiated between MCSL staff and WellPath to meet the needs of the facility and well-being of inmates, increasing annual staffing cost by $3,705.48 and the annual rate of 4% in accordance with the contract's maximum annual rate increase.
Shall I move?
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item, 78, approve and sign amendment number three to contracts Desert Construction Incorporated, McCormick Construction Company, Sunrock Corporation and Staker Parsons doing business as Western Rock. And amendment number four to contract CS McCrossan Incorporated for chips and aggregate, extending the contracts for an additional one-year period with all terms and conditions remaining the same on behalf of Public Works.
Shall I move?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 79, this will be a discussion of possible action regarding designated digital $500,000 for the construction or remodel addition of the Mojave County Animal Shelter to be funded from Capital Projects Fund.
Madam Chairman, a motion for approval?
Have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second it. Have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, I think we'll do a roll call on this because I, I didn't hear all the votes. Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
No.
Chairman Bishop?
Yes. Motion passes. Next item, number 80, this will be a discussion of possible action. Ray direct staff to implement a policy that involves revoking computer privileges for those who do not complete the annual cybersecurity training by information technology, technologies yearly deadline until such time as the employees complete the training.
Yearly?
Supervisor Johnson?
I think the backup pretty much states what, what my point is. I think there was a department head, I think, that wanted to speak on this. Ms. Kinch?
Assessor Kirk, good morning.
An elected official on the line.
Board, Chairman, thank you for having me. I just quickly want to say that, you know, as the assessor's office contains sensitive information for every property taxpayer in Mojave County, it needs to be safe. Unfortunately, Mojave County's IT department does not have complete control of every mouse click and every keystroke in keeping our data safe from hackers. Although IT is at the front line of our data security, they still need our help. So as a director head, I feel it imperative that we lead by an example. Not only should our director heads be trained, but every one of our supervisors and staff members should do their due diligence in keeping Mojave County secure. So thank you for bringing this up. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just think if anybody has any questions, I mean, it's the, the front line of our defense for the county and if we were ever to get it, and we get a tax every day from the computers and it's just a reminder that we send out and for cybersecurity. I think it helps with our insurance if we say we have these tests and if, you know, last time was pretty dismal on the response we had from over, you know, a couple hundred people didn't take the test, you know, we had to extend it. So I think if we say, hey, we're going to revoke your privileges because, you know, for a time being until you qualify, I think that's a good move.
Okay, I, I can't believe anybody is still outstanding. Nathan, do, do we still have employees that have not taken this, this cybersecurity training? And please tell me no.
Morning Chairman, Board. I believe there was about 13 people for various reasons. Some of them were temporary employees or part-time employees. I think we had someone that was a, a part-time dispatcher. You know, there, there are people that aren't here all the time, I think was the list. But I would say in general, I think we're about 99% completion right now, which in my perception was pretty good considering this was the first time we used that tool to track the compliance.
But for a due date of December 31st is not real good.
Right. You know, we did the, we rolled out the program last October as part of National Cyber Security Awareness Month, which occurs in October. We enrolled everybody in the training in October and they had until December 31st to complete the training. And then what we found was we had people that didn't comply. You know, there was a little bit of confusion. We prescribed three classes. Some people completed one, but not the other two. So I mean, there were various reasons why it happened. You know, we obviously learned from doing it and we'll refine it as time goes by and I think we'll make the process easier.
Maybe you could answer, in the state of Arizona, do you know of any other counties that have been hit and had ransomware or they've been locked out of their IT departments?
Yeah, definitely. There's been lots of municipalities in the state of Arizona hit.
Yeah, and that, that's what's important to me. I think at least if we remind people, because we all need to remind every once in a while, but there has to be a consequence and. I have no other questions.
Okay, do you have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, next item, 81, it's be a discussion of possible action pursuant to ARS 42-11153, change the deadline to file for property tax exemption to March 1st to match with the assessor's deadline. Any discussion? Motion? Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yeah, my question was, is it within the legal parameters to be able to change that? My question is to Mr. Eskman.
Okay, I, I don't understand what, what's being done, contemplated here. What are we trying to accomplish with this?
Apparently the assessor's office statutorily has a deadline.
I'm aware of that, but what, what are we?
And we're wanting to match that deadline with, with this agenda item so that we don't every month have people come in and late wanting this exemption.
Well, I think what the, what the law says here, there's a deadline of, of March 1st, but then any person can petition. So I, I think people can still make, still file petition, but you can still deny it. You'll still be able to deny it. So I don't know what effect this motion will have on that because the law says that you, a person can still file a petition, but then you may deny it. So I mean, there, there's nothing, I, I just, I don't understand what you're trying to accomplish with the motion here. I don't, I don't get it.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Angus.
How I see it is that, you know, we do have, that people can still petition, but we don't have a county policy that pretty much says, you know, we, we're each picking and choosing, which is, I think, not right. And if, and if there is a deadline, a deadline's a deadline and it makes things easier and, you know, we, we tell people, we let the, can, can the, Madam Chair, may the assessor come up?
Yes. Thank you. Yes, it's, it's up to you whether you want, other counties have established the deadline to be the same as ours. So it's up to you and as a county on whether you want to allow those waivers to come through. You can double check on that. There are some situations where they can, for example, churches and so forth, but it's up to the county on accepting those, those waivers. And you would have to ask Ryan if he agrees with that, but as far as I see and what Lenore has read, that's up to you guys, whether you want to accept the waiver or not.
Mr. Eskman, is, is it written in the statute that, that we have to give the, the considerations after the deadline?
No. So here, here's exactly what it, what it reads. So the person or organization may have the waiver redeemed by the county Board of Supervisors at any regular meeting, except that no taxes that were due and payable before the petition was submitted may be, may be refunded or abated. So it's optional. It's up to you. So you're basically making a blanket policy, we won't do it. End of story. Is that what you're trying to accomplish here?
I believe so, yes.
I mean, you go ahead and do it. I, I don't think it's the wisest policy. I don't see what the problem is with the way it is now. You may say, you know what, I don't want this. I don't like it. I'm going to stick with this policy, but you may find one or two that you say, you know what, this person should get it. But if you want to handcuff yourself that way, you can go ahead and do that. I, I just don't see the, I mean.
I think what, what some of the board members are thinking is, why have a deadline if, if you can come in every month and, and request?
Absolutely. I agree with you. I agree. You just, the, you're just going to find there may be one or two where you may say, you know what, I want to go past this deadline and you're going to present it to the board and so on. But if that's not what you wish to do, then go forward with it. It's, it's a completely may. It's up to you.
Supervisor Johnson?
Oh, just a, a question for the assessor. You do a good job of putting out the exemptions and things that are available. It's not like this is a secret.
On the, on the radio, in the newspaper, we even have it on our notice, our notice of value. We've included that in the last three years. So when they get the notice of value, they can see all of the programs that we do have available for them. We also distribute a book, Understanding Your Property Values. So yes, the information has gone out there a lot since I've been here. So most people should know about it. I speak at many organizations and explain the exemption program and the senior fees program all the time.
Right. So I think that what Supervisor Angus proposes is a good idea because it doesn't stop them from going next year, you know, the next year they get it, so.
Right, and if it's mid-year, it's just a matter of a, a few months. Okay. Any further questions, comments?
Comment? Since this is a widowers and widows exemption and it, I think it's, would be rather chaotic to have your spouse pass away. So I doubt that the most important thing that you're looking at in that year time is an exemption on your property tax. So I, I'm okay with myself having the flexibility of whether I, whether people miss the deadline of whether I put it before the board for the board to decide. So I, I just wanted to state that I'm fine with the policy that we have now.
Okay. No further questions or comments. I'll entertain a motion. Make a motion, we approve?
Second.
Have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Supervisor Watson?
Yeah.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
No.
Chairman Bishop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item, discussion of possible action. Ray approved the memorandum of agreement between Sam Elters and Mojave County for a position of Mojave County manager at a salary of $155,000 annually and a start date honor before June 29th, 2020, with other terms and conditions as included in the attached agreement or otherwise directed by the board. Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Supervisor Watson?
I'll make a motion for approval at the salary range of $150,000.
I'll second that.
Discussion, Madam Chair?
Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have some questions on the contract for Mr. Eskman. And when, maybe as a comment by the board members also, but number one, why would the manager designate who would work with the board during the temporary absence or disability? I don't know if that's something that we need to look at. We haven't had that in the past where, where we've done that. Also, we're given the county manager broad authority over hiring and firing with no consideration of policies or federal law. Director hires and fires can happen outright with no input from the board. We've seen here before where, especially with department heads, where the manager picks the department heads and then brings them to us for approval. And we have rejected, you know, some of those in the past, but I think it gives a more clearer line of authority if it comes before the boards so we have some input on who's being hired and, and the firing process. Let's see. On number eight, we just hired a director who was told about the leave policy, but we're given the 30 days upfront, which is a tremendous bonus to somebody. I think if we're, let them come in, we're already bringing them in at the highest step we can, let them accrue that 30 days because we're giving somebody, if we give them a 30-day vacation when they show up, I, I think that's not appropriate when we have the people who've been here, you know, 10 years, 15 years, don't have it. I think we'd be establishing a new precedent to accommodate a new hire. It's not good and, and could expose us to legal issues with other employees. The relocating of the directors are given one month's salary for relocation expenses. This exceeds that. This contract exceeds that one-month salary. I think it should mirror the policy for all employees. If you have to have travel for bereavement leave, we give three, I think it's three, three days or something for less than 250 miles and then five days for over that. I, I think we've, we're given a little high on, on that. Those are just some of the things that I noticed in here. I, I had a, had a problem obviously with the way this was put together because we had, you know, we did our interviews and five minutes later we picked a manager and then within a few hours, there was a signed contract, which was post-dated to the next day because we had it on the agenda because it was late. We've taken care of the issue of the salary, which was, I think is a good move on our part. I think those are the only questions I had on, on the contract.
Okay. My manager Hendricks, did you have any comments in regards to those issues?
Madam Chairman, I, I can address, I, I, I would like to address that currently the board doesn't approve directors regardless of what Supervisor Johnson said. What the board does is they approve the director's salary and that's in accordance with our policy. So if you wanted the board to approve the directors, to have that decision go to them, that our existing policy would need to be changed. So one of the things that we did is we tried to mirror an existing contract that was utilized for, for the to mirror an existing contract that was utilized for this specific purpose. And I did have the county attorney, Ryan Eskman, review the language that was included in that contract. And in the process of contacting Sam Elters, he currently has a vacation time of four weeks at his existing position, and he also has two weeks of sick leave. So what he had requested was what is being proposed. And I want to point out to the board that Sam Elters is here today. So if you wanted to bring him up and enter into a negotiation with him, you could certainly do that. I think you could also do that in executive session if you so chose. The other thing that the board could do that kind of puts us at some advantage is to see if the majority of the board had the same concerns as Supervisor Johnson does so that you all would know whether that would be a point of discussion in negotiating this contract because obviously one supervisor can give an opinion, but it takes the majority of the board to make a decision. Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Chair, there's one other thing I left out. We're giving a 600-hour accrual rate. I believe the employees now can only do 300 hours. I just don't, when you start giving somebody more than what other employees, you start a bad precedent, I think, which can be a problem also.
And if I can, if I'm wrong, Madam Chairman, I believe the directors have a 600-hour maximum that they can pull on. It may be time-dependent, however, but we do have a split system, 300 and 600.
I think, is there somebody here from HR?
Mr. Cunningham, or?
My question would be, maybe you can clarify for us. When we redid the employee benefits and everything, I thought we had lowered everybody to a 300-hour accrual rate at a certain date.
That is correct.
That is my only question.
I don't believe that's correct. I think there is a 300 and a 600 depending on certain conditions. Could you please explain that, Madam Chairman, if I could take the liberty?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, that is also correct. So the lower rate is dependent on your hire date. The hire date is specified by date of hire. So individuals hired after January 23rd, 2016 start at that lower accrual rate of 4.62. Individuals hired prior to that January 23rd, 2016 kept the previous rate of accrual, which starts at?
And Madam Chairman, if I may, we're not talking about accrual rate. We're talking about if somebody terminates from the county, what's their maximum payout for PTO? And Madam Chairman, thank you for allowing me to take that liberty, but I didn't want it to appear that I was giving the board any false information.
Yeah, we do need it cleared up. Thank you.
Okay. So individuals under the old merit rule do have the, there is a formula involved. So they can have either 400 to 600 hours in separation, but it depends on how much PTO they utilize within a three-month period prior to that separation. And that's based on their date of hire. Individuals hired after that January 23rd, 2016 date shall not exceed the 300-hour payout.
Thank you. That was all, Madam Chair, the things that I saw that I had questions about.
Did that clear up your question?
I don't want to delay the board. I still have some questions because that's not my understanding. But anyway.
We can adjourn into executive session and discuss this if it's the pleasure of the board.
Madam Chair, may I say something?
Supervisor Angus.
I think one of the problems is this happened so quickly. We interviewed Thursday, we voted, and then, you know, on Monday, it's on the agenda, and we didn't really have the time to kind of talk about it personally. My issue was the salary itself that was taken care of in the motion. But, you know, I always do have a problem with, you know, the accrual and, you know, the parting number. And I just want to make sure that the people who are hired as employees are getting the same thing, as Supervisor Johnson is saying. And I think what you may be thinking is that the people who are in the old system got the 600. We didn't change any of that. So, but the people who are hired after. And, but on the flip side, we did give staff the ability to negotiate. I don't know if changing that up is something that we want to start as a precedent, but that's just me. Other than that, I don't really have any problems with it. And as long as everything that you negotiated that we talked about, the director stuff, is the same policy, like nothing's changed as far as what the county manager, the powers that are given to him in hiring and stuff like that, nothing is different than what you had, correct?
Madam Chairman, the county manager is going to fall under our personnel policies. And our current personnel policies require that the board approves the salary of the directors. It does not require that the board approve the selection.
Right. We changed that.
So that's not anything that we took out. The board has that option, obviously, if they wanted to move in that direction. But currently, the policy is that the board approves the salary structure. They don't approve the individual.
I think we used to. When I first came on board, we changed it a bit. For some of the employees, like the risk manager that reported right to us, and we hired them, we did the interviews, if you remember. But that, over the years, we changed that back.
I think, though, didn't we just have that with the procurement?
We did.
You denied the selection of the procurement director based on salary. You did not approve the salary for the procurement director that I was recommending to be hired. And subsequently, he wasn't hired because of that.
So any director would still come in front of us just for salary?
Unless you all wanted to change it to be different.
No, because, you know, obviously, we could take care of what we need to do within that kind of motion. So that's it. That's all I got.
Supervisor Watson?
Madam Chair, I think it would behoove us to ask Mr. Elters if he'll accept $150,000. Mr. Elters, would you please come down? Or you can stand up there and wave if that's okay.
And Madam Chair?
Please let us know if the price is right.
Madam Chair, this has nothing to do with Mr. Elters. Whoever we hired, I think the process and Supervisor Angus hit on it was, I thought that if, you know, boilerplate contract would be brought to us where the board would sit down and hash everything out so that we didn't have a signed contract. And now we have to hash it out. And, you know, if, you know, some of what I'm saying, obviously, will hit Mr. Elters in the pocketbook and, you know, maybe it would have been easier to take if we hit him in the pocketbook to begin with. But if I was Mr. Elters, I'd say, you're taking money out of my pocket.
Good morning, Mr. Elters.
Good morning, Madam Chair, board members. During the interview, you asked me about salary. My response was, it's a compensation package as a whole. I was not focused just on salary. That has not changed. I negotiated the number that was included in the contract as far as salary as well as benefits. I see that the board has concern with the salary. It's been reduced. I'm okay with the salary being reduced. Is everything else stays the same? But if we indeed begin to chip at those items and the terms that we agreed to, I would appreciate an opportunity to revisit that and renegotiate it. I just want to start on a good foot. I want to earn your trust and your confidence, and I want to make sure that you're comfortable with what I am earning and that I can, I'm comfortable with what I am earning as well. I negotiated in good faith. I do believe I have a full understanding of what my worth is in the market. I believe I will be an asset, and I hope to demonstrate that, that it will, I will be worth what you're compensating me. Again, I thank you for the opportunity. I understand the salary adjustment, and I'm okay with that. But going over the terms in the contract one by one, I would just appreciate, again, an opportunity to revisit that with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Elters?
Madam Chairman, I'm just curious whether the 600-hour, 300-hour issue was in the proposal that we gave Mr. Elters originally, or whether this was something that was negotiated when we entered into the negotiation portion of this.
I think Mr. Hendricks can speak to that.
Yeah, I'll try to, I went over and listened to the motion that was made. And, you know, the motion that was made by Supervisor Watson was to bring the item back to the board as soon as possible. And it's not something that I arbitrarily decided to try to work my tail off to get this done so that I could bring it back as soon as possible. But I think one of the reasons that Supervisor Watson wanted it brought back as soon as possible is he's leaving on Tuesday, and he's for the strip, and that he's then going to Texas. So he's going to be gone for an extended period of time. Not that he couldn't call in, but we tried to make every effort to accommodate the next board meeting, and we were able to do that. Regarding some of the items that are in the agreement for a county manager, you know, I had a template, a contract template that I was working off of. And I actually went in and removed items from the contract template because they were talking about, and this is pretty standard in the industry, on hiring a city manager or a county manager. Sometimes they pay for all the costs for selling the houses. Sometimes they pay for relocation expenses to include putting somebody up for months at a time. Sometimes they pay for points on a loan to get a new residence. You know, there's a lot of things that are routinely included when you hire somebody of this type of a position to actually be the CFO and run a county. We tried to, we went by item per item and asked what would be acceptable for Mr. Elters. And we tried to stay somewhat within what our regular employees are getting. But I can't not tell you that some of the benefits that Mr. Elters is receiving is in addition to what our regular employees are. Some manager contracts even include that you pay for a fitness club or other special considerations for their spouse, you know, to include increased benefits. Along the lines of PTO, we did put in an excess of what a regular employee starting employment with Mojave County would receive because Mr. Elters is receiving a considerable amount of vacation and paid time, sick time, right now from his current employment, which he's now, he's going to be leaving. We included the high end of the 600 hours. If you accumulate PTO and you don't use it, we capped Mr. Elters at 600 hours that he could cash in at the end of his employment. We also talked about a severance that he would be eligible for if he was hired without, you know, terminated without cause. So that's something our regular employees don't have. And our regular employees, certainly to the director, don't have a contract with Mojave County. But I believe not only Mr. Elters, but if you were trying to hire any of the managers or the candidates that you were interviewing, there would necessarily need to be special consideration given in their contract. They would have a contract, but in their contract to get them to come to Mojave County.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor, Manager Hendricks, my question, though, was, was this offered when we originally went out to look for county managers, or was this offered as part of the negotiation when we sent you to negotiate?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because I don't want to play bait and switch. If we said, come hire on as a county manager, and you're going to get 600 hours of whatever we call that buyback on your PTO, that's kind of a bait and switch. But if this is something that we're in a negotiation with, I don't see it as a bait and switch. I see it as a bad policy because we've told our employees that they only get to buy out 300 at the end, but yet this is a 600. If I've got to buy them on something, I want to buy them on something that doesn't create a conflict between rank-and-file employees and management employees.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Gould, when we went out for this position, the only thing that was presented is the job description, a brochure, and a salary range.
Okay.
So, and I'm still a little confused about what HR told you all. I thought, and I still do believe, that directors actually can, directors actually can cash out the 600 hours.
Madam Chair, and this is, I'm sorry, Sam, this puts you in a bad position, but it's not about you. I mean, about your money, but, you know, not about you. Another thing that I thought should be in the contract, and we have it, we've had it in the past, or we've had managers have done it, but it would be nice to have in there, and I don't think it causes any problems for the manager, but that if the manager is leaving the county or taking days off or taking sick leave or whatever, that the board is notified or whatever. In the past, I would have managers who would send a thing saying, hey, I want to take a week off to go see my family, and anybody have anything or anything? But I think it would help us to know where the manager is, you know, and what's going on with that, even if, it could even include a report of what's going on with the county. But it's just, it's hard for me to, you know, anybody that I call, you call up and they go, no, they're off, they're getting whatever, you know. It's not a big deal, but they report to the board so we know where our clerk is every day or, you know, when she goes on vacation. But it would be nice to know where our manager was.
So Supervisor Johnson, I'm not sure that would be proper in the contract. Wouldn't that basically be a policy?
Well, we submitted the policy with the contract, so that's why I brought that up. That was.
Madam Chairman, when Ron Walker was a manager here, he had a county manager's ordinance or agreement to where a lot of those things were actually specified between the board on actually providing the manager clear direction on the board's expectations. It also provided the board clear expectations on the county manager's expectations, like what the board's authority was in contacting the manager's employees or directing activities of the manager's employees, which we don't have. What happened was, because my situation was somewhat special, the board elected not to have a county manager ordinance. And we ended up, I guess you all trusted me enough that, you know, I would notify you when I left town and try to keep you all informed on different things that were happening throughout the county. But that's something that the board certainly could consider in this, little things in this contract that you could enact from the floor or do at a later date with the county manager ordinance. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Angus?
I don't think it's unusual when you bring in a CFO or the president of a company or someone of the caliber of Mr. Elters, that there is a negotiation. And we asked the staff to enter into a negotiation. This is what they came up this back with. The only issue I see is maybe we should have had an interim executive. We can still have the, we tried to have an executive meeting about it. And what has been proposed is what And what you, has been proposed is what came out of it. So we do have a motion and a second, but I just want to know, when is the starting date?
Madam Chairman.
I think it's in.
On, what we agenda is, is what my hopes would be is that we, somebody could start where I could spend at least Sundays, maybe even a week with them and actually take them around and show them the county facilities and the projects and so forth and so on. So the motion, the start date is pretty much up to the county manager, but it said he will start prior to or on June 29th, which is that Monday.
Right.
That's why we wrote it that way.
That's why I thought was the big hurry, honestly. It wasn't, no offense, it wasn't, I don't think, because Supervisor Watson, going out of town, I thought it was to get some time, you know, while you were still here.
That's what I was hoping.
And so I think that was what the big rush was. So again, I'm ready to go forward.
I think, Madam Chair, going with that, Mr. Elters worked in our Public Works Department, a good employee where we trained him up before he got to go on bigger and better things. But I would think as a manager or anybody coming in, they have their own ideas and everything and, you know, working with the old manager, I don't know, I just don't think that's a, something.
Okay. Mr. Esklin, do you have?
As far as an effective date, you can, you can work that out with Mr. Elters. We put it on there on the contract, June 29th, 2020. We thought that that would, that would end Manager Hendricks' time and then start with him, but if you want to move it back a week, you can do that as well, if acceptable, Mr. Elters. I think it's just a matter of coordinating with him when you want this to start. Now's a good time to ask him.
Okay, and that doesn't necessarily need to be in the motion, or does it?
Well, you could do that too. You would do that as well. Motion to approve with the exception of the $150,000 salary and a start date of the 29th or the 22nd, whatever you wish to do.
Can you start today, Sam?
Madam Chairman, as you know, I'm currently employed. I wanted to afford my current employer the opportunity of at least two weeks' notice. My position is key. There are contracts and projects that I'm responsible for. I wanted an opportunity to offer three weeks should they ask for that. So I could potentially leave one job on a Friday and start here on a Monday, and that would be the 22nd. I will do my very best to relocate and be ready and prepared to start on the 22nd. The 29th was the understanding that it would be the latest. And as Mr. Hendricks pointed out, it could, it could still happen before the 29th. It's on or before and we'll work, we'll work it out and I'll be happy to do my best to get up here one week sooner if that is the preference of the board.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Angus, did you have questions?
Does that need to be amended from the original motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I say something? So we're now discussing whether to come on the 22nd or 29th and Mike's leaving on the 29th?
Well, the contract says 29th, but we, I think we ought to give Mr. Elters some latitude. He's trying to give three weeks to his present employer, so let's give some latitude here. So I'm in the motion, could start as soon as the 22nd, but as.
But no later than the 20th?
But no later than 29th. Would that be acceptable?
Madam Chair, and Mr. Hudson, yes, absolutely, that will be fine.
So I'll amend my motion to include that statement.
And I'll amend my second. I have one final question. Is your name pronounced Elters or Elters? I'm hearing both.
Thank you, Supervisor Angus. It is Elters.
Elters. Thank you.
The motion to amend the motion? I move that we reduce the reimbursement of unpaid, paid time off from 600 hours to 300 hours.
Second.
I'm not sure, Mr. Esklin, the legality of amending a motion that's already been made and seconded. Shouldn't we vote on the first motion before?
No, I think, no, we have a motion and a second on the floor. I don't think we can then amend it from that. You would deny it and then you would try to do another motion if that's what you wish to do. But I'll ask, are you guys fine with that? If you're not, if the person have a motion and a second right now, if they're not fine with it, then you can move forward with it.
I have a motion and I have a second.
Yes.
So we need to.
Roberts let you do it.
I don't have Roberts in front of me. I don't know off the top of my head. It's a book that's about this thick.
Familiar with it.
Yeah. And, no, I would not, I don't think that's something that we typically do in front of our board, a motion and a second, unless they wish to do it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. It has been seconded. I'll ask for a roll call by the clerk of the board, please.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Gould?
Yes.
Chairman Bishop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, thanks for the opportunity. Look forward to serving you and serving the other elected officials and county staff and working with you. In fact, I consider it a privilege and an honor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, go on, on to the next item, 83. Discussion of Possible Action. Authorize Staff to Execute a Contract with Wood, Environment, and Infrastructure Solutions to Perform Drainage Study of County Route One at Lake Powell Road Roundabout Project for the Purpose of Obtaining Engineering Recommendation and Mitigation Measures Toward Reducing Frequency and Severity of Localized Area Flooding in the Amount Not to Exceed $22,995 and Further Approve Funded Source to Highway User Revenue Fund 205.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. At this point, I'm going to ask for a 10-minute recess before we go into the budget report.
We could certainly give out the information. I've provided some of that information to you with this last round. We also had information from the first round that supported that. So we'd be happy to provide it to any other board members if they would like to look at that.
That's the only question I have, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Angus?
DOT Foods, again, has been such an incredible addition to the community Bullhead City in their philanthropy, everything like that. But they are now in the midst of building, not just planning, they're building ahead of scheduled Phase Two. Do you know anything about that, Tammy?
What specifically?
Phase Two, like what their plans are and how many more people they're going to hire.
So I don't bring my information with me. I know that the first time that they had said, it was, I think, 180 jobs set right, and within less than the time, they were about 240. And I think this time that they've said it's going to be 75 or 80 jobs. And I'm sure that it will be far surpass that as well.
Maybe at some point, not in the very near future, we can have them come up and just do an update.
I agree. I think that would be important, and I can ask Rocky to do that. I just didn't bring my stats with me, so I apologize.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I think that would be a good idea to have DOT Foods give us an update. Next item is--
You did that lunch, right?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
Discussion possible action, Ray adopt the fiscal year 2020-2021 tentative budget with modifications, and set August 3, 2020, as the date for the public hearing on the final budget and tax levy, truth and taxation if applicable, and set a special board meeting for adoption of the final budget on August 3 following the public hearing. Good morning, Coral Lloyd.
Okay.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Manager Hendricks.
Before Coral Lloyd starts, I'd like to express my incredible gratitude to her and her team for putting all this together and getting us this far. One of the things that has occurred that was incredibly unexpected is that the CARES Act has provided us with additional funding. And so that's like $9.1 million, and we expect to get that, and Coral will explain that a little bit further, but we expect to get that, I believe, in July. And so that has to be included in our budget. We did have some requests that we believed were needing to be addressed and weren't able to be addressed with the proposed budget. But a couple of things that this CARE monies is going to be able, for us to do, is to bolster our financial status. For one, it will allow us to also take a look at what we believe are certain things that were overlooked and are needed from a certain area that we now are able to place before the Board for Board consideration and possible inclusion into this budget. So there's a couple of items that Coral is going to address with you all and leave it to you, the Board, to make a decision on whether you want to include them and go forward with it. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
And thank you, and again, I thank all of you for this opportunity, again, to discuss components of the budget. So the tentative budget that you are considering today sets a ceiling for all appropriations. So while you still have another opportunity or another bite at the apple, if you will, this will be the maximum that the budget would be able to be set. So from here, you could always go down, but you could not increase this. So it is important to consider all types of modifications that would come before you today. Within the packet is a list of modifications from the preliminary budget-- excuse me, from the preliminary budget. And those were included in there. There is nothing unusual or different about those. Most of those changes and modifications, if you will, are purchase over rollovers from the current year over into the subsequent year. In addition to these modifications as listed, I do have then five others that have arisen since we've turned these in. The first one being that you had an action item number 83 today that was for some engineering services. It was $23,000 in the HER fund. And if necessary, then we don't spend all of that before June 30, then we would roll over the balance of that. So I'm asking to put in an extra $23,000 into that to possibly roll that over. Also, on item number 32 that you approved today, we were requesting that we be allowed to increase the legal services line item and risk management next year up to $350,000 from $200,000 to $350,000, so that would go in today if approved. Inadvertently, within the preliminary budget, there's an item to reclassify an IT systems analyst position from a Range 19 Step 9 to a Lead Software Developer, Range 21 Step 9. The purpose of that reclassification is to more accurately describe the work and the responsibilities that that person has. That person has the responsibility of the cybersecurity areas. So it is a very important function that we be able to retain this person and classify those duties as they so fit. The cost for that initiative is about $8,900, including the benefit cost. We also have a request to include additional monies to purchase body cameras in the sheriff's office, and that would include additional related position and then IT upgrades if necessary to cover the full body camera program. We're anticipating that that could be up to a half a million dollars. There could be some other types of legal costs on both the prosecution and defense that are not currently covered, and clearly some ongoing annual cost. For any other costs that come up, it's going to be a while before this would, you know, come to fruition, if you will. And that a contract of that size would need to come back before the Board anyway through procurement. So you would have another opportunity, not just with the final budget adoption, but also during the year to discuss that further. And then the final modification is exactly what Manager Hendricks spoke about. I'm requesting that we be authorized to put in $10 million as an unawarded appropriation at this point in time. $9.1 million of that would be to address the CARES Act funding. And then I'd like to put another little cushion in there in case there's other grant funds that we're not currently aware of. I would like to advise and make sure that you have a clear understanding that in prior years, we were putting in $5 million as an unawarded appropriation to cover items that would come up throughout the year. And this year, we had already bumped it to 10 with the COVID situation really unknown and what was going to happen. Now knowing that that number's actually more than $9 million in concrete information, then I'd like to keep the five cushion just in case there are other items out there and that we have to go through a bigger round, number two, or that there's some redirection with the Treasury Department for the FEMA monies. So that would bring your unawarded appropriation back up basically to 20 million to cover all of these unusual items. In terms of a recommendation of the $9 million, essentially, this money, the amount that's calculated, is based upon our Public Safety and Public Health Department's regular salaries and benefit costs for a period of March through December 31. So what we're currently looking at submitting and is allowed, according to the guidance, was last year's March through December compensation for those categories. And that exceeded, it was about $10.5 million. So our cost for those nine months already last year exceeded this amount, but that's what it's going to be based upon. It looks like we'll probably need to bring back to the Board some paperwork for you to approve us submitting our application for that money. And then the guidance indicates that within essentially a week, three to five days, that that would be reimbursed once we can complete the application process. We would recommend, at this point, not knowing for sure that these are one-time monies, that we set those aside for one-time uses. So theoretically, you have obviously an open canvas for this, but potentially $3 million for capital projects, one-time projects, or one-time capital investment. And then, you know, my recommendation, of course, from the financial perspective, would be to boost up that contingency and get it closer to the $10 million or 10% range. So with that, I'd be happy to go through each of the other initiatives with you or the other changes, or open it for questions. Okay. Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You're doing pretty good, and then you confuse me.
Okay.
Are you saying that we've got $10 million in contingency plus $9 million that we're getting from CARES? So you're going to have $20 million. But then you came back and said we have $5 million in contingency. What are we going to have carried forward for contingency?
So in the general fund contingency, we're proposing that it was $4 million prior to the CARES, which was $3 million plus the one. This, the CARES would then add $6 million of the nine to move it to $10 million. In the unawarded appropriation, the way that we just theoretically have to bring this into the county, that the guidance said that you could not bring it directly into the general fund, that it needed to have its own designation. So from my side of it, technically, then we would put it in unawarded. So your unawarded started the current year at $5 million. I had already requested in the preliminary budget to go to 10. Now I'd like to go to 20 so that we can account for what we've already proposed, plus the extra $9 million.
I guess I'm still a little-- when we do the budget, we always build a cushion, and we have a $10 million cushion.
Yes.
So you're adding $3 million from the $9 million that's not going to be put for anything?
Yes, for capital.
Okay, but is the CARES that loose? I thought, I mean, we really don't have that many costs for the CARES. I mean, the COVID has not strained our budget. I mean, you know, the deputies aren't working more hours. Our nurses are already getting paid, and we're getting grants in for that. I mean, they would be hard pressed to say we've got much debt. Now, the only debt that I can see, not debt, but the biggest cost, I think, to this county and to this Board that we're going to have to address is my favorite court. They're so far behind. They're doing some good things with videoing juries and trying to work out that way, but they postponed a lot of cases. And so with the right to a speedy trial, and if I was a defense attorney, I'd demand that right away. You know, the courts have said they would be interested in running night courts because we have to get something going. I mean, besides, I mean, the people that have been arrested have a right to a trial, you know? And then we have all the civil cases that we have to have, you know, a right to a trial. Those people are sitting around waiting forever. And I think that could cost us, you know, in preliminary talks, just to get a ballpark with the court. They tried to tell me a quarter million, but you know they're lowballing us, you know? Because once we're in, we're in, so I'm thinking half a million. I don't know if that would cover under CARES. See, what I'm worried about is us showing, if we get $9 million, we just can't take it and party. We've got to have, you know, show them some kind of receipts that we did it with COVID, don't we?
We actually, we do not. All that we have to show and demonstrate is actual regular salary and benefit costs for public health and public safety. So it is assumed in their language, what it reads is that, I actually have it here somewhere, but--
So, Madam Chairman, instead of getting reimbursed from-- Madam Chairman, may I? Instead of getting reimbursed for actual hard dollars spent on COVID, we're getting reimbursed for that period of time, that payroll for the sheriffs. reimbursed for that period of time, that payroll for the sheriffs, and if necessary, for the health department. And that, as Finance Director Lloyd said, that exceeds that, that payroll bill exceeds that 9.1 million that we're going to, that we're eligible to receive, which is based on 115,000 times our unincorporated population. That's how they figured it. It goes to the general fund, it goes to county purposes, and at least for the time being, it's not directed to reimburse us for expenses. Now, if it sounds too good to be true, it sometimes might be, and that's why we're looking at being very, very cautious with what we do with it at this time. So on actual monies that are in reserve, we've got $4 million that was proposed to the board, what, in May at our budget workshop. We're proposing to take $6 million of that 9.1 million and put it in that contingency to bring the contingency up to what Coral has always recommended, to $10 million. That's what she's always recommended it needs to be. So we'll have hard dollars of $10 million in our contingency. Secondly, we've got $3 million left over. We're proposing to not allocate that for anything special, but hold it in reserve in our capital building fund for future building projects, like maybe, say, a morgue or something else that we're going to need. So that's what's, for our hard dollars that we're going to be receiving, that's the only changes that are being made, with one exception, we're saying, we talked to ASAP. ASAP strongly supports the county moving towards cameras for our law enforcement officers. They believe that that small investment, and it's not a small investment, it's considerable, but could, has saved our county insurance pool and the counties in the past, and they think that it would be a wise investment for us to move forward and limit our liability in the law enforcement arena. So that's what we're proposing. We're taking ASAP's recommendation, and we're proposing that as a good expenditure to move forward with, for the board.
Do you know what the ongoing cost would be on the body cameras?
According to what I saw, there is a storage cost. The, in understanding what the sheriff is looking for, there's a vendor that provides an entire package, and that actual cost, since we don't have a good feel for it, could be, we're guessing, about $310,000 annually. We threw in $500,000 just as a placeholder, because we also believe that for us to be able to handle it, there may be some improvements that are necessary, some grades that are necessary for our IT department. So the county would get an ancillary benefit from purchasing the cameras. We could look at some, some things with the IT. Now, I haven't talked to Nathan about that, I need to do that, but from what we can understand, and the sheriff might have a better handle on it than me, but initial cost would be the 310, roughly the 310 to $350,000. Is that about? And Sheriff is in the office, if we could call him back, because he's the expert on this.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Supervisor Johnson, we actually have got a quote from TASER, which is a provider for the Axion camera. It's a solid system, and it's roughly $1.4 million over a five-year period. That breaks down to a little under $300,000 a year. We would need additional staffing, in-house civilian staffing, to administrate such a program. And my concern is, from day one, we've wanted body cameras. But as you all recall, we put together a 10-year plan stressing the needs of the department, and those needs at the forefront have been staffing. So this year is the second year of that plan, and based on the initial budget hearing, I was told to remove the request because it was unknown. So I did that. I didn't ask for any extra funding. We're certainly trying to play within the realm. When I hear that additional funding is, is coming to the plate, I'd love to get body cameras. I think it's overdue. In fact, I want to thank you, Hildy, for kind of championing this. She's been talking to me about it for the last couple of months. But the bottom line for me is, I can't, I can, I just want to make sure the board understands this is ongoing. This is something that doesn't go away. Once we put this cost in place, it must be a budgeted cost, and it must be something that we're going to be ready for year after year after year. If I'm going to spend $400,000 a year on body cameras and a civilian staff, that's four deputy sheriff positions that I could have out on the street. So the cameras, if we can get them, I applaud you. I absolutely applaud you. But I would like you to always maintain consideration for our 10-year plan because we're making a tremendous impact. You're making a tremendous impact. We have seen a great reduction in crime. We have zero openings on the deputy end. We are bringing in lateral veteran officers. We have a waiting line. That speaks volumes to where we are now compared to where we were three short years ago, and that's only possible with the support of this board. That's really the bottom line. If you want a strong law enforcement presence in Mojave County, you must fund it, you know? And we came with the approach, let's try and do it over a longer period of time, so we don't have taxation. If the county is doing well fiscally, we'll come and ask for funding from that overage that happens each year. But we must maintain the course. So $1.4 million for the program, and another, I would estimate, $80,000 to $100,000 for staffing, and that's just real-world, real-world costs.
Sheriff...
Madam Chair, if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
TASER said it's, they say $300,000 a year. What are they doing the next year that's worth $300,000? Is that just the maintenance of it, or? I don't understand. If we buy the cameras and we got all that, why do they want $300,000 the next year? Because they're greedy, Buster, that's why. No, it's a process. The big expense with the camera system is storage, and that's an ongoing expense. There's a lot that is incorporated into this plan. This is all-inclusive. This means that every year, instead of coming to you saying, "I need 70 tasers," and trying to put a request in for that, we're budgeting a TASER program, which, by the way, is only $100,000 more than the actual camera system, so it's a win-win. It's the whole package. So they do all of the unlimited storage that we need, and that is vital. The amount of storage that it's going to take to make this successful with an agency even our size is astronomical. We've talked to the local agencies who do run body camera systems, and they have expressed the magnitude of time required just simply for redaction on reports. It's not a simple, you know, we're not going to throw them on tomorrow and everything's going to be hunky-dory. There's going to be a learning curve, and we need people in place that can do the redactions for the courts, for the civilians that request it, the FOIA requests. It's a big process, and the extra money that you're paying for, basically, everything in that period is covered. TASER goes down, you get a new TASER. And with that TASER, of course, is the camera. It's completely warranted. Everything is good to go for that period. We can sole-source it out and say, "We just want the cameras." It's going to cost roughly the same or more if we do it year by year. That's why they encourage the five-year contract, and they say you can pay it upfront. If you want it, you got your 9.1 million. If you want to pay 1.5 and the contract's done, great. Or you can do a third or a fifth of that. It's completely up to your liberty. Have they made any decisions, probably court decisions, on how long you're going to have to retain that? No, because you have some, I mean, let's say we get an appeal and it's 10 years old, and they expect us to have that camera. We have to save it... Yes. Very similar to the current requirements for evidence storage. If it's a major case, it's going to be stored almost indefinitely because you do have that appeal process, and this is true evidence. So, yeah, there is guidelines in place, and I think there's some leeway for change. If it's a minor offense, say a traffic stop, and you don't receive a complaint on that stop in a certain amount of time, 30 days, it can be washed over. And we'll make sure we dial that process in if we get to the point where we're getting the cameras, because we want to, you know, follow the guidelines, but in the same sense, storage is going to be very expensive, so we want to keep ours at the low end as much as possible. So it could possibly, with storage in a few years, our costs could go up just because we're storing five-years-ago stuff? For now, with this particular contract, the five-year contract, it's unlimited storage. So that's a good thing, because a lot of agencies across the nation, I've studied this for several years, they say it's a great tool, but it's not cost-effective, especially with the smaller agencies, and they're dropping out of the program. It's that yearly continued cost, and it's a big hit for a lot of agencies, and I understand that. Yeah, that's why I was asking the manager, because he was saying, you know, the 300, I knew there'd be different costs coming in, so. Right. I appreciate, and then maybe when it comes back to the board, we can get Nathan involved and... Sure. And I will forward to the board a copy of this invoice. I actually just obtained this this morning. There was kind of a last-minute push to get some information for you, and thank you for entertaining it, but please don't forget about my 10-year plan.
Any other questions?
Not of the sheriff, but of Ms. Lloyd.
I've got a question of the sheriff.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Sheriff, who controls when the camera is actually active?
It's Supervisor Gould, that's department-controlled, and when we get them, anytime they're out the field, they're going to be on.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Angus? So if this company does all of that work, storage, redaction, retrieval, downloading, what would another employee do, a full-time employee? What would their, why would you need a full-time employee?
Supervisor Angus, there's much more to it. It might be more than one time, or one employee, it might turn out to be two. Even though they provide redaction tools, we still have to do that redaction. We physically have to look at the video, and if you're looking at a three-hour in total video, the estimation is double that for redaction time. That's six hours for that one video to redact it properly before it can be released. You need staff to do that, basically to administer that program.
I thought that that was included. I mean, because that would include laws and stuff, so it would have to be highly trained. And are you sure about that?
100%. In fact, we reached out to HAVU PD again this morning. They don't have a specific civilian employee doing this. They have three sworn officers who all share their time, and they say if they had three more, it'd still be too much. It's very, very intensive.
Okay, but are they still satisfied that they did the right thing by having them?
I think they're satisfied with the body camera system. I think if you talk to the individual policemen who are stuck in a closet copying videotapes, they wish somebody else would do that.
But it's important, and as Mike was saying about ASAP, and I'm hearing from counties like Yavapai that they believe it was the best thing that they did, because in the long run, it helps out with litigation. So there is a cost-benefit in the long run, and training, which is another thing that I'm sure that would help in your department.
To me, there's no doubt the value exceeds the limitation. It just comes down to, do we have the money to do it? And that's been the issue from day one. These systems have been around for 10, 15 years now, and the nice thing is, all the problems that they had early on with these systems, they've used that to make correction, and we kind of reap the benefit. We come in at the end and say, "Well, you got it all dialed in now, and you figured it out, and you've got the right software to manage this. Now we want in." So it's a good time to get in. The only concern, again, I want to stress, is it's an ongoing expense and it's not cheap. And so next year, when I say I need more deputy sheriffs, don't say, "We gave you body cameras, there's your money." Because if that's the case, the proposal is not what I'm requesting. Any other questions?
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Sheriff, does the tape need to be redacted, or do all videos need to be redacted, or is it only redacted when it's going to be a public records request or somehow used?
Supervisor, that's a great question, Supervisor Gould. No redaction required unless it's going out of house.
Good. It would just be, if they had to redact everything, it would be undoable.
Yeah, I don't think you could do that.
So Sheriff, I could support this 100% because I know that this reduces the amount of citizen complaints against your deputies. It also encourages customer service with the deputies, because they know themselves that they're being recorded. So hopefully, that helps the citizens and the sheriff's office all the way around.
Chairperson Bishop, you're 100% correct, and I will say, our deputies, with or without the camera, they are out there to do the best job they can, and they're very customer-service orientated. We want to treat people with respect. We do believe strongly in visibility and transparency, so in that sense, yes, picture speaks a thousand words.
Okay, we'll see if we can't make this happen.
You want to talk about deputy sheriff positions, or are we done? All right, next time, then. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Johnson.
We have directors' increases included in our, in our budget. In the reviewing it, and it was brought up that they're the lowest paid in the state. But these increases appear, once they're put in, our people will still be the lowest paid in the state. I think we should look at sending that back for review and having, because if you notice the comparisons they use, I think they kind of use comparisons to justify what we want to spend. I would like to see the comparisons, and I know some job titles are different in different places, so it's a little tough, but, you know, compared to the other three counties of our size, and then throwing in the three cities of our size, I think we're doing an injustice to our people, you know, our citizens, let alone the staff, who might not be getting paid what they're worth. I think those things need to be, need to be done, to looked at, you know? Because if we lose them, we always end up paying more, more money. If we might have paid our employees more, they'd have stayed. Plus, they have the institutional knowledge, and we'd have to bring somebody from the outside who we don't know, and it takes a while to get there. I think we should look, because it's been close to 20 years, maybe 15. Somebody can tell me if, we did a comp study, and I'm not big on comp studies, but I think we can look at, if we have to do a comp study, we have to do it, but I still think we can look at what everybody else is paying and possibly bring our people up. I think our regular employees, we're not compensating them the way they should, and I think it's something we're going to have to address. You know, like the sheriff was just up talking about his people. We have a lot of people that we're not addressing where they should be. I don't believe we're rewarding them for, you know, some people are getting more education, more training, but we're not paying them more money for the knowledge they have. But I think it's, it's going to be a concern, I think, for the county if we don't address that soon. That's all, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I have one other question, might as well. Ms. Lloyd, how many departments gave bonuses out this year?
One.
Okay. What is the county policy on bonuses? I thought we had to have a county policy. I don't know of a county policy on bonuses.
I think that the, that the courts have a separate policy structure that they follow.
I don't think that's, well, I mean, I could be correct with what you're saying, but I don't think that's legal. I think Mr. Eppman could probably tell me, but I think in order for bonuses to be given, the Board of Supervisors must adopt a policy to do that, because I have never heard of a department giving bonuses. And I don't think that's right in the county government, or any government, but maybe we can look into that, because there's other departments that would love to give bonuses.
Okay.
That, that's all now.
Madam Chair? Supervisor Angus?
During the budget workshop, we talked about the raises, which I had a bit of a problem with, to even talk about it while thousands of people have lost their jobs. And there's, and, you know, we talk about our budget now, and that we seem to have ridden out the worst, but we don't know. And then there's other things going on in the world that we all know about. We don't know what's coming down the pike. And so, you know, to talk about more raises, you know, ever since I took office, I've heard that same story. We're going to have a problem, people are going to leave, da-da-da-da. And I just haven't seen it. I haven't seen it, it hasn't really happened. I mean, I think it's been normal attrition, and, you know, whatever happens, and we get new people in, because we have a great staff. And so if we start talking about more raises and higher raises, especially now, I will not be able to support this budget at all. I mean, maybe if you want to do a thing in the future, but right now, I think that every taxpayer is out there shaking their head, like, what are they talking about? While I'm out of work and I haven't gotten my unemployment, you know? Hopefully, we'll come out of this, and I'm hoping we'll come out of it better, but right now, to make those commitments, I think is, is not a prudent thing to do. So that's where I stand on the raises. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Johnson?
I was just kidding about that, it was the last thing. I was just kidding about that, was the last thing. You're putting in $400,000 for the court?
Yes, sir.
How much over budget has it gone? We gave you $20 million.
Manager Hendricks?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor, they have had a considerable amount of change orders, but the project is currently within the budget allocated. What I am being told is to close out the project, there's a potential that there's going to be an additional change order and commission the building, there's going to be some monies needed. So if you want an accounting of the project right now, we've got Director Lotosky here who could probably address it for you. But what I understand is that we're right today at the amount of money that has been budgeted for the total project. If there's any other unforeseen conditions, then the staff will have to come back to the Board and ask for some additional money because we'll be in excess of the project budget. That's what that is, is potential change orders to the existing contract. That's what you're seeing there.
Okay, was there a, did Mr. Anderson not understand not to exceed what that meant or?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, so far we haven't, but it is possible that it will and in anticipation of that possibility, that's why we put the $400,000 in there.
And then there was kind of a follow-up on something Supervisor Angus brought up. The Board had set that $2 million for the animal shelter and then somebody came in at $2.5 million. I have a problem giving another half million for the animal shelter, for something to come back. I mean, it's just like if I said, well, I'm giving Supervisor Angus $2 million to build a house and she comes back and goes, oh, I need another half million dollars. She can't live in the $2 million house. I just, that's something that'll come back to us, but that was all. Really, I think that's the last thing.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. You know, we're talking about divvying up this windfall of CARES money and the one person that we've left out of this whole thing is the taxpayer, the property taxpayer. I think that we should forego our annual property tax increase because of this. I think we have the money that we don't need to raise property taxes and that we should actually adopt a lower rate that reflect, so that we come out of the same net property tax income that we had the year before. I would take the new construction increases because that's different, but this other is just inflation on the taxpayer and I think they're going to see that we got this pot of money and that our costs were not really as high as the money we're being reimbursed to and they're going to wonder, you know, what about us, the taxpayer? We're the guys that fund this stuff. But that's a comment. Thank you.
Supervisor Angus?
I would agree with Supervisor Gould, except we are still in the middle of this thing. There are so many unknowns. So when we come out of it and if we're still intact and maybe even ahead, I think it is something definitely that we could entertain next year, but this year still, there's so many unknowns that this just gives us, you know, a way of breathing, just in case something happens. And I think the taxpayers understand that right now. I'm not saying next year, but right now. I hope they do.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. If we're worried about unknowns, maybe we should not be spending this CARES money. Maybe we should put this CARES money in the bank and see what happens. But it looked to me, the majority of it was going to get spent on special projects. So if, and life is unknown anyway.
You're correct.
You know, we take a risk every time we roll out of bed.
I think $6 million was going into contingency because we really don't know.
Right.
But it's there.
Madam Chairman.
Like a bank account.
Madam Chairman, $6 million, in essence, it is going into the bank. It's going to be invested. $6 million is going into contingency and not being allocated to bring our contingency up to $10 million and then the $3 million is going into non-obligated, into the construction fund. That's what we were proposing to the Board at least. Thank you, Madam Chair.
But in the end, it'll all get spent and that's the expectation of the taxpayer is that when they see this stuff, they, I've already seen it, that they said this stuff's going to get, it's all going to get spent. And perception is reality in politics.
So didn't the taxpayers receive stimulus checks? And this is kind of, not the same, but it's similar. It's federal money that's coming to try to right-size the property taxpayers that are hurting because of unemployment or whatever their circumstances. And this $10 million is for county governments to reimburse their costs for public safety and health. I'm assuming emergency services, those costs in regards to the COVID.
Is that a question?
No, I think that was a statement.
Oh, okay. Madam Chairman, the federal government creates money out of thin air. They don't have, they didn't, this is not cash money that they actually took in as taxes. It's an expansion of the money supply. When you expand the money supply, you devalue the money in everybody's bank accounts. So that everybody that had savings, that savings is now worth 40% less than it was before they decided to do this. And this just shows the loose fiscal policy of the federal government that they've given us $9.1 million with no strings attached, other than that we're supposed to vaguely use it for expenses related to COVID. When we, our costs are less than $100,000 is what I've heard at one of the previous meetings. So this is just doling out money and the people that are going to be affected by this are my children, my grandchildren, the fact that they're going to have to pay this debt. And to me, the handing out of money, it was really not the business of the federal government. It's unconstitutional. And if, I think the taxpayers should be the ones that benefit from this because they're the ones that are actually going to suffer the consequences of it. But that's not what we normally see. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, Carl, go ahead. Okay, does that conclude your presentation, Carl?
I think we have any further questions? Chairman Bishop, I thought that you were saying, okay, or I'm ready to take board action. I would clarify, if I may, that under the guidance and going back to Supervisor Johnson's inquiry, that what it actually specifies, it says, as a matter of administrative convenience, it is assumed that all public health and public safety personnel are either performing COVID-19 related duties or their jobs have been materially changed due to COVID-19 and therefore this would help compensate. And following up with Supervisor Gould's statement about the costs so far, at the end of April, we had actually incurred more than $300,000 of actual costs, but what was to be reimbursed, most of those are full-time salaries in the public health department and in emergency risk management. We're not allowed to receive reimbursement for those costs, only overtime cost and actual material and equipment. So there, we've spent, you know, the last two and a half months at least, with many of those persons doing full-time COVID-related work, but we will not receive a reimbursement under the federal, the FEMA money, that that would need to be covered under this money. So there's been more than $100,000 just not reimbursable through FEMA.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Well, that's what we pay them for in the first place. They're already on the payroll.
That's right.
It's not additional money.
That's right.
They're doing their job anyway. That's already covered. So the additional cost is less than $100,000.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so with that then, if you have no other questions of me, then I would turn it back over to you for decisions or additional questions.
Okay, it's a pleasure of the Board.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion? Do we have more discussion?
Make a motion to approve the tenetate budget.
Okay, do we have a second?
I have a second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
That's your vote.
I was just contemplating whether or not we should do a roll call on this since it's a, you have our votes down, right, Jenny? Going on to item number 86. This is discussion of possible action, an update from the County Public Health Director to the Board of Supervisors regarding recent issues, actions, events and county responses regarding COVID-19 and taking necessary actions based upon those updates. So we have Denise Burley, our Public Health Director, at the podium.
Good morning. I've had to think about what time it was, my normal 12 o'clock meeting or not. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Just wanted to give you a brief overview of where we were at right now and also let you know that, as you'll probably see in your report, last week was the, we had the greatest number of cases in our county at 70 and five deaths. And interestingly enough, I know a lot of focus has been placed on long-term care facilities, but in this particular instance, we had a higher number of general public cases than we have had in the past as well. So for example, let me make sure I get my stats right here. The percentage of cases coming from individuals not associated with long-term care facilities accounted for 76% of the cases last week compared to the previous week, which was 59. So we are seeing a transition and as you know, these long-term care facilities, those infections come in from the outside since there are no visitors. These are about staff. These are about doctors. These are about care providers that come in and provide services to these individuals. So we do recognize then that there is community-acquired cases out there. They may be not known to those particular individuals. I think the latest news that I heard was putting the asymptomatic cases somewhere around 35% of the population that acquire this. So that's quite a few people that could be walking around without knowing that they're actually infected. So even under the best of circumstances, even with screening, these individuals may not show up as positive. So we continue to work with the long-term care facilities though, just to elaborate a little bit, because these are our most vulnerable population. These are people at risk and we want to do everything possible to ensure that these congregate settings are protected to the degree that we can help them be that way. What we are doing, just some extra steps, we do meet with and actually have a set time every Thursday at 10:30 for long-term care facilities to call in. This is just a conference call setup so that people can call and ask questions if they have concerns. We'll address them at that time. We did send out a reminder notice of that to make sure that they were aware that this was still occurring, along with the ADHS and CDC guidance for long-term care facilities, which includes both skilled nursing facilities, which you'll hear them separated out sometimes, and assisted living facilities. And then also our resource request form, which is used to request personal protective equipment and other things from the health department. We also worked with Warm Sea last week to test all remaining staff and patients at a long-term care facility in Bullhead City. And this was to identify cases and begin the isolation process, quarantine process for those individuals. We should receive those results back, as I understand it, today. As of this morning, we had not received that information, so we'll continue to update that information to you. Let's see here. Sort of aligned with that conversation is the need for community testing. As you know, this has been an ongoing issue and what we're learning is that testing supplies no longer seem to be the limiting factor for us, but more or less, it's actually capacity to perform the testing and do this outside of a hospital setting, for example. So I have reached out to at least one hospital in our county to talk about how we can work together to increase community-level testing, so that would be outpatient. It would be, we'd have to define it very clearly, whether or not that's symptomatic or asymptomatic, whether or not that's coming with a doctor's order or not with a doctor's order. So there's a lot of factors that play into that decision and play into who would be eligible for that testing. It could be close contacts of those individuals that were a close contact to a positive case. So there's that piece as well. But essentially, the hospitals themselves have their current testing set up for their admits, their healthcare providers, EMS, and they may have some other factor, you know, individuals and categories in there as well, but that is where they are. So there is very little to none going on in our community outside of that, with the exception of some private providers. And they are working specifically, for the most part, with their patients. So it isn't as if someone can just go in and get tested. North Country is providing testing in each of the three communities and those are by, only for symptomatic individuals and with doctor's orders. Or they need to be a patient of North Country's. So there's quite a few kind of issues and challenges out there around community-level testing and cost is of course, one of them. There are a number of people, for example, that work in facilities that are either uninsured or underinsured. And I'm not certain of the reimbursements for hospitals and providers around COVID testing, but I do know that that could be a limiting and a challenging piece for them Supervisor Johnson, you had mentioned last week that there was a change or a difference in the numbers and there is a difference of six, I believe. And we have that actually figured out within public health and I have Roger over here because the next piece of this is messaging this out to the public. Because I don't want, nor do any of you want this to be perceived as manipulating data, but there are factors that go into and reasons why data would change. For example, and I think we've discussed this a little bit here in other meetings, first and foremost, we may get a case assigned to us and then learn later that the jurisdiction has changed and that person's permanent residence is actually in a different county and so that it gets reassigned. So it's no longer our case, but we've already reported it based on our current system of reporting. So technically, that's not our case anymore. So we would need to remove that off of our dashboard. Another instance would be places where there might be a duplicate case. There might have been, the information may have started to be entered and then someone else started to enter it. They may have used a middle initial. There's a number of reasons why that would happen, but in those cases still, we would remove the duplicate case out of that. But in the meantime, that was already reported. So we need to address those concerns and bring those, that data into alignment again. So messaging that out, as I mentioned, to the public is a really important piece, that they understand the reasons for that change, why it occurs and they don't necessarily understand or know basically our process for how we report our cases and how that changes our dashboard, our county dashboard. But it does affect it and then when we need to change it, we need to reduce those numbers back to actuals, to make them real. Did I explain that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't understand, is, are the state health department that dumb that they can't figure out that an address for somebody, that they would send it to us and we find out, oh my gosh, they belong in Yavapai? I mean, that seems like a pretty stupid mistake to me.
Well, and actually, it's not always done by the state. As a matter of fact, sometimes it might be with another county, or a hospital could enter that data into MedSIS. There's clinics that enter that information into MedSIS, which is the database that's used, again, to distribute those cases to the appropriate entity. So in those cases, they may have written down an address that they thought was correct, and it turns out that that isn't the correct address. Or there's probably a variety of reasons that I'm not familiar with.
It just seems that the -- that all these people that are, I mean, the laboratories should have the correct address for a patient. Arizona Health should have a correct address for them. You might give the police a wrong address, but you're not giving your doctor them the wrong address. It just seems -- have we had any of these that have come to us?
We have. Yes. And of the six, I couldn't tell you how many were, of that six there were.
So how did we handle that before? I mean, we didn't go, "Oh, we have 142," and then, nope, we got 140.
Well, that's just it. We haven't addressed it. But of the total number of cases we have today, we have six that we need to adjust for. So we -- and we have to figure out how to do that on our dashboard so that numbers that you all get in the daily report would match the dashboard.
Will we need to hire a new PIO after this one's killed, or?[1047.33][1047.33](Laughter.) I'm not handling that. That's all we have on that.
And Roger can speak to maybe how this can all work. Because we, there's a couple of different scenarios, of course, of how we might message this out, whether or not we do it as a separate, sole and separate press release that explains the why and what the new count is. There might be also the possibility of combining the two and making it all in one.
Yes, it's, it should be simple, you know? And I feel on my side of things that this needs to go in one press release and not two separate. It gets more, there are enough people out there and enough media that I deal with that feel like the numbers don't mean anything, they're manipulated all the time, they're too high, they're too low, they're, what does this really mean today? There are plenty of people out there who respond in such a way as to say, "Hey, thank you for keeping it, we believe these are the correct numbers." If we, and when we do this, I think to do it in two press releases, where we say in one of them, "This is why the cases are different and everything," then we do another press release where the numbers are in a different mode than they received before, it becomes even more of a problem. So I think it has to go into one press release and maybe stay there for a while. And the language should be extraordinarily simple and to the point. We shouldn't get in any kind of scientific or medical complication in the way we express to the public how we're doing this. Otherwise, it becomes an even bigger problem. That's how I see it, anyway. Simple, to the point, and in language that is understood by everyone, lowest common denominator kind of thing.
Okay. Roger, we look forward to that press release.
So do I.[1174.21][1174.21](Laughter.)
Keep it simple.
I think I've gone through my list of my bullet points here for today. Can I answer any other questions for you?
Okay. Any questions of the Board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Denise, you spoke of, last week, we had 76 cases.
70 cases.
70 -- no, you said 76%.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Of those cases, were, they were not connected to other cases?
The -- accounted for, they were not part of the long-term care facility.
Oh, okay. How many were, yeah, how many were not connected to other cases?
No. They are connected.
I got the impression that 76% of that was community spread cases.
So what we have are, let's see here.
And you may not have the numbers for the last week yet because you haven't, probably haven't run all those down, I wouldn't think.
Correct. Right, right. So the number of cases, the percentage of cases coming from individuals not associated with long-term care facilities accounted for 76% of the cases last week.
Okay. No, I got the impression that that was 76% community spread, which would have really been spooky.
Well, those would be, if they're not coming from community spread, or if they're not coming from long-term care facilities, and they're not travel-related, they're either linked to another case, which is likely going to be considered community-acquired and community spread.
So that's how they define it, even if they've caught it from somebody else in their own household?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think--
To me, it looked like most of those are the other members of the household.
Right.
Catching it.
Right, right, right.
Rather than me walking through Walmart catching it.
Good point. Very good point. Right, yeah. And I don't know that they separate out the difference quite that way.
There, I think there's quite a bit, they should, though, because I think that's quite a, that's a big deal, and that's quite a difference.
It is. Correct.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Okay. Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Has the Health Department shut down a restaurant for COVID?
No. Not to my knowledge.
Has a restaurant been shut down because of COVID?
No.
All right. A few meetings back, you said you'd look into how fast Lake Havasu could gear up for a COVID. Have you found that out?
I believe they're prepared at any point. You mean, you're referring to the hospital, right?
Right.
Havasu Regional Medical Center. Right, yes.
What, I mean, is that 10 minutes, two days?
Well, I think that they can probably do it within a matter of days.
Matter of days, okay. Recently, a lot of, a lot of the ones that are coming out were saying under investigation. Now, I'm guessing that's because you got the information, you haven't called to verify the address and stuff. But we seem to be getting a lot more of those.
We are. And that's in large part because the cases are coming in so quickly. 70 cases is a lot in a week. And considering we're still following up with other cases, so we're, we're getting there, yes.
I don't know how we do it, you know, maybe the PIO is still alive, he could figure a way out. But it's kind of tough when you have 17 of them and 10 are under investigation.
Correct.
And the next day, we just forget about those. You know, we don't say they got them from, like Supervisor Gould said, community spread and, you know. We don't ever follow up with that.
Right, right.
In your opinion, has the reopening of the dining and Memorial Day weekend crowds contributed to the rise that we had, or we still haven't seen that yet?
It would be hard to argue that it wasn't. I mean, I think the opening of the community and the lack of physical distancing that now is more apparent is definitely playing a role in this. Because truly, even with opening our communities and opening businesses and such, we can still operate off of a physical distancing situation and reduce that spread. We follow those same guidelines, it can help reduce that spread. But looking at, just looking around at some of the things that I've noticed throughout the community, and I don't know if you've noticed as well, that I think there's less interest in continuing that at this point.
Okay. I think my last question is, have we ever figured out, like, when we still have the report that the PIO sends out, it'll say, "It has different numbers for the cities" than our dashboard.
Right, right. And that's part of the six, and that's part of our cleanup. So that will be part of that whole alignment and making sure that those are correct.
Does the PIO have trouble with numbers, adding in?[1484.33][1484.33](Laughter.) That's all.
We are getting up there in numbers.[1491.01][1491.01](Laughter.)
Yeah. He needs an assistant.
Sure.
Okay. I see no other questions, Denise. Thank you very much. One thing that I wanted to bring up, the in-person call to the public has been suspended. And what's the pleasure of the Board? Do we want to continue that, or do we want to open it back up to the call to the public?
Madam Chair, we have the author here, maybe. I think the problem comes from cleaning of the equipment and stuff, you know? Is that something if we have called the public, we have three or four people, we need to supply something to run down and wipe down the mic and wipe down the other?
I do think that's been part of our protocol, to try to make sure that everything is, like, even me touching here, exactly. Keep my hands.[1544.63][1544.63](Laughter.)
Denise, what are your thoughts about opening up the call to the public so that they, they can come down to the podium and speak rather than to email? Are we at that point where we can safely do that? Or would you recommend we continue with the email call to the public?
Well, based on my last comment about community-acquired, community spread, I'm a little concerned about opening that up, although I understand the importance of it to individuals as well. So if there were a way people could just come up and present their piece and go back, and this could be cleaned and so on, in a timely manner, I think that that would be a workable solution. I just worry about people congregating up in the, up in the lobby as well.
Okay. Supervisor Angus.
Did I miss something today? Was this thing being cleaned when people were coming up and talking? So, I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna tell--
As Denise steps back.
Yes, as I step back. You know, if we're gonna tell the public they can't come, because I think that we should, you know, do it ourselves. And I, for the one or two, or maybe three people who really want to come, I don't think that we should stop it since we are congregating. And let's face it, put on TV and everyone's congregating. It's a choice now. But if we do that, then we should be doing it anyway, cleaning up. So my, can I make a motion that we, that we just want to--
Madam Chair, Supervisor Angus, I will throw it out there for your decision, obviously. But we could even continue to do both. We can do one or the other. I just need some direction so I know what to put on the agenda.
During this time, I only really got one email from somebody who really wanted to come to do this, asked me. Other than that, I think it should be the choice of the person. You know, they're going, coming in, standing here and going out. So they're not, they're not walking around and doing stuff.
Well, I know, I read one call to the public, and the author was a little insulted that I didn't read it with enough passion or something. So, you know, you'll have that, too. They want to--
They want to be here. So I make a motion--
-- able to experience their passion. And reading an email, you can't necessarily relay their same feelings.
So I'm going to make a motion that we reopen the call to public, either in person or still by email to the Clerk of the Board.
Okay.
Question, why would we do both? Now we've gone from having people come up front to sending emails. Pick one or the other. Now you're putting stuff on the clerk. I don't know.
Was your motion to do both?
It's either or, depending on them. You know, if they, because it's now, people might not want to come. They're vulnerable for their own health, but they still want to have something said. I think we should leave the choice to the constituent.
I guess maybe something could refresh me. So this morning was, we had call to the public, and it was all about trash that had already been reported to the county. So it wasn't like--[1751.13][1751.13](Inaudible.)
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. And we are adjourned.
Aye.[1772.63][1772.63](Laughter.)[1773.63]